Lord, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Few moments for our veterans, day after Veterans Day, and for your own attentions. Thank you. Motion approved the agenda. Motion in a second, but I'll let Doreen take the second. Any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opportunity for public comments. Is there anybody who'd like to speak on public comment? Typically, I allow three minutes apiece for public comments.
On the thing.
What did that say, five? I don't know what thing that would be.
My name's Joanne Noiz, and I live at 8338 North Bloxburg Mountain Road. And I hear regarding the-
Your microphone off.
So, Ms. Noiz, if you want to talk about that variance issue, you could do that.
Right, and I have a 10:30 appointment, so that's why I was just going to say that. That's why I'm speaking now. My name again is Joanne Noiz. I live at 8338 North Bloxburg Mountain Road. And that is, I'm speaking in regards to the variance request, the number two under the heading. For Anderson's. We live across the road, myself and my neighbors, and other people in the development that I've talked to are against this variance. For one, it's very narrow. the current width is only like 14.4 feet. Hardly allows for two vehicles to pass without having one to pull over further, like into the ditch or on the side off the asphalt. The sides of the asphalt is in very poor shape. They're going to present that there's not that many vehicles that travel that road because there's not that many lots. But there is actually more, and I've learned of more since then, since the planning commission or planning meeting. One of the lots has daughters or teenagers which are now driving. So I understand there's four more drivers in that family. There's logging trucks that go down to the sawmill. That's a private sawmill down on one of the larger lots north of the development. There's two different garbage trucks that drive on it. There was a gas truck. There was a propane truck. There's four-wheelers that use that road up and down. There's people that walk that road that it's very dangerous for them to walk when there's traffic on it. And one other concern I have, not really regarding the variance, but the new lot itself, is that snow removal is not included in the mill levy that is assigned to the lots. It's included in the Bloxburg water fee or Bloxburg water bill under a homeowner's fee that pays for the equipment and the drivers that remove the snow. And this new lot would not be under the Bloxburg water. It would be under the Bear Butte Water System. So they would not be paying for that. That has nothing to do with the variance, but I'm just bringing that into your attention. Mostly, it's the narrowness of the road itself. And also that the pavement is all on the west side of the section line itself. And it's my understanding from a former road district person that it was paved that way because the owner, which was Anderson's father-in-law, would not allow it to be extended onto the other side of the section line.
That's your time, Ms. Noiz.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll take that into consideration during the- Anybody else want to speak on public comment? I'll again remind everyone if there's something on the agenda or a hearing, we'll handle that then.
I'm Larry Newman from Black Hawk, and I'm just wondering if the commissioners know of any qualifications for Governor Noem to be named to head Homeland Security other than having the courage not to ruffle feathers or being brave enough to shoot a dog that's threatening to her family and friends? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. Anybody else for public comment? Anybody else have anything in public comment?
My name is Bill Freitag. I'm the developer of 320 acres on Elk Creek. At your last meeting, you did the final approval on my first 24 lot plat. So what I wanted to bring to your attention is I had some phone calls this last couple of weeks about Elk Creek being closed, which is a road that services my subdivision. And it was closed because the gravel wasn't adequate. I don't know what all the reasons were. But that's going to happen from time to time. And I've, from the beginning of buying this land and developing it, I've mentioned that I'd like to have the roads paved. I paved the roads within my subdivision. I'm not doing gravel roads and asking you to pave roads. I paved my own roads in there. And what, just for your consideration, because it's just informational at this point, but I'd just like you to consider, like the first, the plat you approved last meeting was for 24 lots. And those lots are going to pay roughly, I don't know what the tax rate's going to be, but it's probably $600, $700, $800 per lot just to start with before I ever put a house on it. Once I put a house on it, those taxes are going to go to probably $6,000. We're putting barn dominiums in, so that's what our original plan is. Somebody might buy something different. So those are going to be $500,000-plus dollar houses that'll go in there, so they'll have a decent tax bill with them. So if you took that tax increment that that house is going to create times 24, that's a pretty decent number. And then you amortize it at whatever rate would be there over an 18-year time period. And I'm referring to making a TIF or a tax increment district. We could use those dollars to offset some of the costs that was required to pave these roads. So rather than just come to you and say, "I want you to pave these roads. I'm offering you, I'm willing to participate any way that I can." And I think that's a good thing that we ought to consider, is taking that entire 320 acres and turn it into a tax district. If we do that, there's guys way smarter than me at farming these things. But from what I've been told, that's the best way to start, and then you do your TIFs within that district. From time to time, you don't have, you don't put everything on the clock all at once. So I would just like you to consider that. And just also for your consideration, I, on Elk Vale, which is, I'm actually on the corner of Elk Creek and Elk Vale. And down the road at Elk Vale is the gun range. And I've talked with Game Fish and Parks. They would like that road paved. They're willing to participate. I've talked to John Kunta. I don't know, he said he would be here today. I don't know if he's going to make it or not.
Time's about up, Mr. Freitag.
Okay. So anyway, they're willing to participate on paving Elk Vale down to there. I'm willing to do what I can to help get Elk Vale paved down to there. So it looks like a way to generate money that's available. But you guys hold the key to it because you're the ones that's going to have to approve the district. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention for information.
Thank you, Mr. Freitag. As far as the, correct me if I'm wrong, Troy, I always superintendent, we had two trucks stuck on Elk Creek Road on last Thursday, Friday. I believe one was ours and one was another truck. We don't know which one got there first. But that was the reason for the road closure, which obviously it's going to happen. Doesn't matter if it's interstate highways. And I know you weren't. I just wanted to update because you brought that up. And this is all, a lot of stuff is stuff that will possibly be hitting the agenda at some point, and we can go into it further at that time.
Remember, two-thirds of the amount of taxes collected out there goes to the school district. It's not come to the county.
Oh, I'm aware of that.
Thank you, Mr. Freitag.
Thank you.
Anybody else have public comment? Anyone else have anything for public comment? Ain't no one rushed the mic, so we'll go on to equalization.
Good morning, Commissioners. Rea Crane, Director of Equalization. I provided information for you in the monthly report. Building, the appraisers are still working with building permits. I think they covered 473 permits last month. Honestly, if I can put on my auditor hat, what I would really like to do today is thank a lot of people in Mead County that helped us pull off an election. From Ben in the Facilities Department to the Sheriff's Office, Pat and JJ, who had sheriff's deputies at all the polling locations throughout the day. The Treasurer's Office, Robin and Carino were big help. Equalization Office, we had Jill that came down and helped us. We had John and Mike. We had even the staff that didn't come down, Cindy and Shirdell, were picking up the slack upstairs when people were downstairs helping us. So many thank yous to pull this off. Thank you.
It was, there was a lot of votes.
Lot of votes.
High percentage, so.
Yep.
Great job.
Yeah, thanks a lot for everyone.
I think the auditor crew got out. It stayed there till six o'clock this morning, or that morning, Wednesday morning.
Yep. It was a very long day.
They've been putting in a lot of hours. I had talked to them, and they had a lot of people. I remember there was a lot of people, locally even, that was fighting against the auditors in the system. And they went on head-on, and they did a very good job.
What do you mean fighting? Did you say fighting?
Fighting, I guess that might have been the wrong word, but there was rooting, going against what, how the auditors should handle elections.
During the count? No, no.
No, no.
Oh, prior. Oh, yeah.
For about a year.
We did have three observers that came that night, and they were all very pleasant and very supportive.
Thank you for making me clarify that, but yeah. And it's been a hard year for the Auditor's Office.
Any questions on the DOE report?
My only, November 1 was the end of the assessment period, right?
Yes.
Did you run a grand total by any chance?
We still have to get all of those transfers completed. We get the October transfers in November, so those need to be completed before we do our final numbers. Anyone? No questions? You're making it easy.
We'll be back for auditor though.
Next week.
Mr. Petracco, do you have anything for facilities?
Good morning, Commission. Ben Petracco, Facilities Director here with a quick report on some of our workload from October and into early November here. We had another busy month with about 54 work orders submitted. A lot of typical HVAC and plumbing work orders from the jail mostly. We were able to get a above-ceiling heat pump replaced in the law center that serves some of the PD offices on the lower level. That was kind of a big project. We had to open the ceiling up and use our lift and get that put in, but we got it up and going, so.
How much did that end up costing?
I haven't got the final bill for it yet. I want to say it's around $5,000 for the unit.
Oh, not as much as we thought.
No, well, that's, it was one of the smaller type ones. They range anywhere from about that to $11,000 for some of the bigger units.
That's added in as part of this.
Right, yeah, that will go in on that agreement where it's billed properly, for sure. I just, I haven't got the final invoice yet.
No, that's fine.
I'll be getting that to the Auditor's Office here. We were able to complete the radio power monitoring system installation out at the inning Tower Site. We also replaced the door frame and door on the enclosure as it was pretty weathered and starting to deteriorate and rot, actually. We got that changed out while we're out there doing our service on the generator as well. We replaced the garage door seal on the Elm Springs shop on the bottom of the garage door. And also, they were having problems with their, gas furnace out there wasn't working. We had to clean the igniter rod, and the gas valve itself was stuck a little bit. Took a little bit to get it going, but as far as I know, it's still working good. We were able to get the Erskine retaining wall stain completed. I was sweating that one a little bit because we were running out of nice weather there in a hurry, and I had a hard time getting all the stain. But we got it done. We completed our quarterly air filter and air handler services for all three buildings, as well as our monthly AED inspections. We have started, or actually, we have completed our generator services now. We finished those up last week. Got all six of those serviced. And we are continuing to work on finishing up all our outdoor projects, landscape trimming, leaf collection, and winter snow removal equipment prep. I ordered and received our yearly custodial supplies for 2025. Had the election setup and tear down. All that seemed to go pretty smooth. We didn't have any major issues, which was good. Another little project is I added another security cable run and camera in the courthouse lower-level hallway near the State's Attorney's Office. That was something that came up in the Security Committee discussion. There's a few members of the committee decided that it would be nice to have another camera down in that area, kind of a blind spot in our system. Got that working. Probably our biggest, not probably, my biggest concern lately is the courthouse roof. We had that two to three inches of slushy wet snow, and we discovered approximately 25 more holes that we didn't know were there. They just, that membrane's deteriorating so quickly in the last month or two that every time we walk it, we find more small round cracks, basically. So, you know, we've got them. Again, we patched, had the roof guys come up. And at this point, they don't want to put any permanent type patches on them even. They're just using caulking, basically, to stop the holes and try to get us through the winter. But I feel like it's going to be an ongoing battle this winter if it keeps going the way it has.
You know, when you got that estimate on the roof, that was, and how soon could they-
Nobody's going to be able to do it this year yet. We're going to have to get through the winter. I've got like three estimates that I did forward you guys, but I can go over those again. I think we're around $245,000 to $250,000 is the lowest ones.
What's the soonest that, did anyone say what the soonest they could get to it was?
It would be next spring. Yeah, I mean, they're not going to tear it off this fall, but, and they didn't give me exact. But probably like the sooner we accept it, the quicker they could get us on the schedule, obviously, you know.
Are we going to go out and have to go out for bids on that? Probably just authorize them to go ahead and put the bid documents so we can get it through. And then give them a completion date. Go open, let's just get it running. Otherwise, they're going to be booked up for next-
Yeah.
That's kind of where I was going with that, yeah.
You guys want to go ahead and go through an architect to get a build spec on it, or just go with the bids that I've got?
We're going to have to bid it. Probably is worth having that spec that everybody's bidding. You know, they can have, they can bid it as alternatives.
And you can help him with that as far as getting set up for bids and stuff, as far as how to do that, so.
I have not done that process.
So if you work with Ken, then we could authorize the-
Yeah, let's just get moving on.
Yeah.
Get it together, and, but, yeah, you're way beyond.
$50,000, I think.
Yeah. Does that have to be a certain temperature, too?
As far as when they do the project?
Yeah, or is it just trying to get in between rain?
I mean, they can, they can do that type of work at pretty low temps, but they're not going to want to try to tear off when we're going to have any kind of snow or anything like that. So, I mean, I've talked to several of them, and they said that last year there were some projects they were tearing off in November. But this one's a big enough project that they're going to need a pretty good, you know, time. Plus, the other thing that makes it hard is scheduling stuff around the court schedule, too, is difficult because we can't have a lot of banging and noise up on the roof during court days. So some of that has to go into the planning of it.
So maybe you can tell the judges during a certain period of time they're going to have to be at another courthouse?
Well, or they could schedule stuff in the basement.
Yeah, yeah, the basement shouldn't be affected too bad, but we'll just have to work with them. And their scheduling has been pretty full lately. They've had a lot of court over there. So if that trend continues, you know, it'll be a little trick more tricky to try to get it pulled off. But I mean, they did it before, we did it before 18, 19 years ago, whatever it was, so I mean, it can be done for sure.
It's a busy courtroom downstairs, full-time use.
No, they like courtroom one mostly and two upstairs.
Well, let's, I would say let's get that done as far as getting, work with Ken. Probably just we'll get the jail as well, I would assume. We're getting close to when we need to sign some bonds, so.
Yeah.
We'll need all that here.
The jail, we're not noticing as much with like the weather we've had lately, but it's when you get the wind-driven rain, that's when that one seems to leak.
I understand.
The difference is, is this is the first time that I can remember in several decades we have the money to maybe do the roof.
Yeah.
So if you could possibly get the bids, we can make that decision. By the time we get the bids, it's going to be, hopefully, we get that done by the end of the year. It won't be, I know.
Yeah, I don't know if that's going to happen at this point.
Makes sense to, if you bid them together, you would hope you'd get a better price.
Yeah, they're two entirely different types of projects, though. So I mean, I know I've got some contractors that don't want anything to do with the law center one, but have shot pretty good prices on the rubber roof, so.
Well, yeah, you could bid them a separate project.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and they could, yeah, they could decide.
Why don't they want anything to do with the LVC?
They don't do that type of metal roof work anymore. And we've looked at some other options, too, that, you know, we could explore further. Maybe doing a rubber membrane over the top of that metal, that is an option. It looks a little different, for sure. Supposedly, it's supposed to be just as durable, 20 to 30-year solution.
Well, why don't we bid it both ways and see what it comes in at?
Yeah, we definitely could. I mean, the architects will do whatever we want them to draw up for a fee. All right, I guess that's pretty much all I have right now.
All right, thanks, Mr. Petracco. Any questions for
Good morning. Uh, Deborah Branshaw, Director of Human Resources. Um, the report for the month of October was submitted to board docs. Um, we finished our open enrollment with only, with ninety-eight percent completed uh within the timeline for accepting open enrollment. Uh, during that time, we did have two people leave and then two that uh didn't make it the open enrollment deadline. And.
What happens to them?
Uh, we continue their benefits uh during that was provided by the county, but any of the elected ones drop off.
Oh, okay.
Uh, but they had plenty of notices. They had notices sent to them every day, so.
Oh, oh, I know. I, I got a few of them.
They've been informed.
They were well-informed, yes. And their, and their department heads were also trying to reach out, but um some of these people have uh medical insurance through Tricare or a spouse. And so um it, they just didn't go in and do anything for open enrollment. Uh, for the communications, I show you that we have uh one person onboarding. We, we had two open positions that came up in October. One person will be on boarding next Monday, and we do have a conditional job offer out to a second person. So hopefully we'll have those two positions filled shortly and training underway. And let's see, if there's anything else here that. No, the only thing I wanted to note is in the uh payroll period that is coming up or that we're closing out right now, um, the Massa benefit will be included on your check stubs, so that is reconciled as all of our other benefits are. So hopefully that will go successful tomorrow, including that in our um packet when the, when it's open and ready. And uh, yeah.
You had that, uh, we discussed, just you and I, but you have that Three Rivers contract that we need to sign.
I do. I have the, so the Three Rivers is our TBA. And they handle the claims and the buy down for Avera. And they are also, will be doing it for um Wellmark. So we do have, it's an agreement uh that they, that we are going to allow them to handle our claims and continue that process. So I do have that for approval.
Well, I'll have to sign that, so I, I, I will, I wish we'd got it on the agenda, but I'll need, we'll need action.
Uh, well, I don't know. We already approved that, that whole healthcare package.
This is a separate, this is who handles the claims. Contract with the.
So it's a contract, separate contract.
The contract is done with Wellmark. This is just the claims and they just have to have a signature that we're allowing them to look at people's claims is basically what it is.
Yeah, it goes without saying we have to do it, but I think I would need to be authorized, I would think, wouldn't it, to sign it? It's different from the healthcare package. I would say it's part of the healthcare.
It is part of it. That's what I think.
It seems like if we don't have it, we can't.
Yes, it's an authorization for them to review claims and do the buy down.
Wanted to be clear that it was okay for me to sign without, without authorization, so I, I didn't sign it the other day, so, but. Seems like there's no additional cost because we've already approved the cost.
Right, but this is additional, this will cost.
Um, the cost that is, is the ten dollars that I had on the premiums where the administration fee is what your TBA is.
But that was approved when we did that?
Yes, it was.
Right, the ten dollars was approved?
Yeah, we have eleven dollars this year, but we had it lowered to ten for twenty twenty-five.
Maybe that was the meeting you were gone. I don't know.
That could be.
Could be. Any, okay, I, I, I will sign that after this meeting today.
Okay, great.
Wanted to make that clear that that was going to be. Thank you. Any other questions for human resources?
Okay.
Uh, IT department.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tony Cummins, IT. Um, KPI for October, uh, about average. Um, we had quite a few uh non-work order related items pop up, you know, election-related, um, coming from AMSEC and Secretary of State that, you know, for alerts and stuff that they were seeing on their side of the fence for us to uh address ours, to make sure that we were, you know, protected and as, as safe as we could be. Um, there was quite a lot of that with the election. Way more than I've ever seen previously, so.
Can I pause you right there and just say, I don't think I had you on the list, Tony, of thanking you for all of your hours. Lord knows you were with us late one evening, for sure, and multiple times, many days.
Yeah, we had some printer issues and some uh tabulator uh configuration issues, but we got through it, yeah.
Whatever happened with that printer, were, were you able to make them change that bill?
That has been emailed off and I am waiting their response.
I would expect that to be. I'll avoid. I would. Uh, we did save them coming out here on premises a couple of times when we were dealing with the issues, you know, via phone and stuff like that, so, you know, we saved them quite a, quite a few hours and travel expenses coming out to us as we assisted to corrective issues. Pardon? Yeah, I looked like I came out of a coal mine. Um, I guess that's it for KPI stuff. Uh, the CISA hygiene report, we're looking good as always. Um, continue to address and adjust as different threats are um notified coming into us. Uh, the elections information sharing analysis, Anta, uh, ISAC was a, a huge help, um, notifying us to any um ongoing uh exploits in the wild that were not kind of, you know, public knowledge as yet. Um.
You said you had a lot more this year. What, do you have any idea what? Or what they were attempting to do?
I'm going to make it, an educated guess, it's, I'm going to say AI has been a huge, uh, huge increase on that kind of stuff. I'm even seeing where emails coming in. You know, you've probably seen a couple of emails that you don't normally get, spam that are coming through, you know, it, it's just getting, they're getting better and better at it.
Yeah, I see we make a lot. Thank us for purchases a lot.
Yeah, yeah. Um, the mil- uh, excuse me, malicious domain blocking stuff, you know, I mean, that's, you know, one of our better, better um procedures that we're using for uh for stopping all those malicious websites getting loaded on the end compu- endpoint computers, et cetera, so I mean, that's a huge help. And then two projects that we're currently setting up with, we got um in our dispatch center, we start our new project for GeoCom today. Um, that's our met- new mapping system, so uh we're going to start crossing the Ts and dotting the Is and all the paperwork on that. Hope to get that done sooner than later for the sheriff. And then in the jail for COs, we have uh new radios coming up, um, I believe later this afternoon, if not tomorrow, for uh implementation and setup for the COs, so. That's going to be a huge benefit for those guys over there, especially when.
So they'll be, they hear better between the two buildings?
Yeah, so now they, they should be able to communicate when they're in the courthouse if anything goes up and et cetera, et cetera, and in all those dead spots, uh. We're going to have to do a lot of testing on that. We may have to purchase a couple of extra access points, you know, for the dead spots if we find any. Um, we don't have a great wifi in the jail currently, you know, it's, it's sufficient for what the COs need and for what our work knowledge is, but we're adding those wifi radios in there, so we might have to adjust a little bit, but that shouldn't be a huge expense. Well, that's about all I got. Any questions? Thank you, guys.
Tony.
Uh, planning.
Ria, our screen went back down.
Poor Tony has to come back and, oh, is each one a separate button? Oh. Sorry, Ted. They must thought you were leaving early.
Barney and Tanya Vig, Planning Director. Um, on the KPI for October, we kind of switched up things a little bit. Um, we decided to report how many total permits and license applications we take in from building permits, septic, rightaways, contractors licenses, just to give an overview of everything we're doing within the office. And then we broke it out per um permit type or application scrolling down. Um, so if there's any questions on that, please ask. Um, it just seems to be more accurate of what we do in our office. Um, for October, we did have Golden Valley subdivision and Creek Meadows and Infinity Landing subdivisions coming in as preliminary plots. We're working through some of the issues on those. Um, they'll be seen again in December for December's meeting for more preliminary work on them. Hopefully the engineers get some, that data revised. Um, GIS stuff, um, we're preparing to run AID land, getting started, um, seeing what, seems like we got some Schneider issues, so we'll be working out, working with them on the software issues and hopefully get that up and going and get a good report. Any questions on KPI before I move into a memorandum?
Yeah, we do have action.
Well, I, I just had a, I noticed there's a new um.
Oh, sorry.
Uh, building inspector coming on, is that an addition or, or is that a replacement?
That's a replacement for Renee Slaughter.
Oh, for Renee, okay.
So I revise the um job description from a planner GIS to more of a building official and to run all the permitting. So a lot of these permits that Max currently does, she'll go back to more of the planning side of everything, and then the new building official will do all the permitting, everything that comes through and then help out in the field also instead of Max and I going out in the field a lot. So just trying to, it's something needed, it's sort of, I still need another planner, but this I think will fit better for the time being.
Well, and it's, it's something that you learned would help the workflow in your office after, after being around a while and jockeying all the decisions. That's good. Good to make changes if.
Yes. So he'll, he's going to be full-time December second, and going to work next Monday, the Monday after, and then come on board.
Yeah, we do have some action to, to take place today and within planning, which is termination of a, a memorandum of understanding with Somerset and Meade County uh on septic systems. Would you go ahead and explain that?
Uh, yeah, so Meade County has done Somerset septic inspections within the city limits. Um, and I've, I'd found a, the agreement dated September twenty-sixth of twenty nineteen. We haven't gotten a lot of them, and the last couple that we had received from Somerset, they're not in our format. Um, it's only our fee that we charge, which is a hundred and fifty, and a lot of times the contractors were not licensed or we were chasing a lot of their contractors around because they're, they're just two different types of style we use. Um, I had visited with Ms. Schiefer with Somerset and she was agree to allow an outside source to do Somerset septic inspections. Um, the last two just were just not productive, and we still don't have a final on them. They never call us. It's like the contractor was getting lost in where to go because the building permit would be through Somerset, but the inspection would be through us, so it'd become um multiple jurisdictions to go see and it just, we're streamlined for Somerset also.
So in other words, we're not doing them anymore?
We are not doing them anymore, no. And City of Faith also does their own, but we do not have an MOU as Faith, but Faith is, we helped them enough to get them to help, taught them enough to get going on their own, so Faith does her own also.
Any questions, comments to this resolution? Um, I, I think it, in the last, therefore be it resolved. And it says adoption of this termination. I think it should say adoption of this resolution. That's better language. That, would you agree with that, Mr. Cleberhad? This is more your, I'm reaching out into places I probably shouldn't. Okay, uh, I think that just makes a little more sense if we just change that word. That'd be my only suggestion on that, otherwise. Any other questions, comments to this? If not, could I get some action?
Oh, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-four dash eleven with the change of termination to resolution. Uh, there, therefore it be resolved.
Motion in second to approve this resolution with that change. Um, is there any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ho, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vig. Any other, no other questions for?
Uh, there's a, um, MOU, is that, that was for the septic. And we don't have a jur- because I think you talked about a jurisdictional one uh that we do not have currently in place with some of the cities, or the plating jurisdiction?
Right, that's common, yeah, that's, yeah, because Somerset's um lighting jurisdiction is expired also. City of Sturgis would like to re-modify their boundary, which I have met with the City of Sturgis on that boundary, so those are coming also, trying to get all of our MLUs up to current standard.
Thank you.
Hmm.
Um, Veteran Services.
Good morning. Sean Henderson, uh, Meade County Veteran Services and Emergency Management. Um, for the emergency management side of the house, nothing too significant. Um, fortunately, we hadn't, we didn't have any structure fires or anything like that, no more burn ban violations that I was asked to uh to visit, but we did have one last week in Whitewood that I was notified and I was asked to go respond to, but when I got about halfway there, I was notified that it was in Lawrence County, so. I think, I think she said it was six hundred and fifty feet into Lawrence County. So I was like, okay, well, I, I guess uh it's Lawrence County, so, um. One thing I did want to bring up that uh, I, I kind of thought about this morning, it is pretty significant, is the Forest Service lifted their stage two fire restriction ban. Um, so now we're, we're back at stage one as normal in the South Dakota side of the Black Hills of the Forest Service. Means no campfires still, that kind of stuff.
I noticed Lawrence County lifted their burn ban too.
Did they? Oh, I didn't know that. Okay. Well, we needed the rain, so.
Mm-hmm.
Very nice. Um, and that's, that's really all I got for emergency management side. Okay, the Veterans Services side of the house. Um, well, Saturday, uh, I was on the, the committee for the Northern Hills Veteran Appreciation Fair, also known as Got Your Six. Um, it was outstanding, it was amazing. It was my second year being involved with it. A lot of planning and a lot of uh coordination. Um, we had fifty, well, originally fifty-nine vendors. Um, we had three hundred and eighty-seven guests at the event. It was huge. Um, it was very crowded and packed and it was, it was just great. I can't say enough about it. I'm glad to be a part of it and it's an honor. Um. Okay, and uh so on the, as far as veteran assist and interactions, um, my busiest month yet. It just continues to grow. I, I said someday it's going to plateau. I don't know when that day is going to come. Uh, a hundred and eighty-nine veterans in October. Uh, of course, last month I was gone for a week, uh, you know, there about almost a week at my convention, so it was a little bit lower last month, but um a hundred and thirty-nine existing veterans and fifty new veterans that I had never worked with before. And uh, it's already busy this month so far. We're not quite halfway through, so, but yeah.
About how long from the time they approach you are you able to have a meeting with them?
Um, about a, depends, it depends on what they need. If it's something quick, I, I can do it on the fly right then and there if I have in-between appointments or phone calls. Um, if it's anything significant where we have to go through medical records and we're going to need, you know, an hour and a half or something like that, then no longer than a week.
Oh, I, I would say that's.
Yeah, I try to keep it.
That, that, that's great, you know?
Because the pile will just continue to grow if I go any farther than that, really. That's how I kind of look at it. I don't know, it's, I, I try, it's, it's why I work really, really hard in order to keep it. Take care of as many as I can throughout the day and make my time here like, uh, I guess worthwhile and.
You're, you're almost averaging a ten a day.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. Sometimes fifteen, sometimes, sometimes no, no less than five usually. I mean, sometimes it's just adding somebody of their claim or setting up a direct deposit, something kind of easy. But uh, you know, burial benefits is, takes a little bit, not too long, but, you know, it, it depends, it all depends. Everybody's got a different need and um different levels of, of care that they need. You know, some people need things really spelled out to them a little bit more than others. And, yeah, good stuff.
For you, I, I wasn't here at the last meeting. I was swat back over to the AM side of things. For you, I, I wasn't here at the last meeting, I was swat back over to the AM side of things, uh, and so if you did, I apologize, but did you, uh, update the group on the, the conference call that we were on, I don't know if Dren is on it or Rich either on the-
I think it was after the last meeting.
It was on the seventeenth, so it would have been, you could have, either way, if, if you haven't, if-
I don't think I did, did I?
Updating a little bit about the call about road closing?
SD 501?
Yeah.
Can you talk about that? I know we've talked about it before, but we had another conference call, I mentioned.
We made, we got any further with that?
Not since you and I have talked, um, I still need to meet with, um, JJ and Troy, the sheriff.
And I was planning on sitting down with him as well, sharing some of my thoughts.
I really just need to set up a meeting whenever there's time, honestly, I just kind of, you know, kind of went over my head. But, um, I, I guess to summarize, um, there was a conference call, there, there was the first one, which is the initial one, where they said, hey, this is coming, um, I mean, if everybody knows SD 501 is an app that interfaces with Google Maps and A- Apple, I think, and Waze, um, in order to notify you of state and federal road, federal highways, yeah, the interstate, that if there's closures, right, or suggested closures, well, South Dakota reached out to all the counties across the board, I think sixty-six counties, right, and, and said, you have to sign up for this if you want to be able to, uh, I don't want to say road closures, that's their terms, but we're calling them, um, what do we say, they're notifications of, or, or suggested-
They say advisories.
Advisories, that's the word I was trying to think of, advisories to, um, uh, to prevent people from bypassing the, the county roads and the interstate and taking, you know, uh, the county roads, um, and putting themselves in law enforcement danger. So we had our second conference call and I invited, uh, Troy and Highway Department and, uh, JJ and Pat and Sheriff's Department and yourself, Mr. Dren. And, um, they, you know, continued on and it kind of gave us more insight, it hasn't gone into effect yet. I mean, we can sign up for the, uh, the website, you have to interface with the website. And we sat down briefly, Gary and I, to kind of, uh, assess how we were potentially will split up the county. So it's not, you don't press a button essentially, and the whole county is now advised not to travel, um, because it's such a large geographic size, that we should, um, you know, maybe split it up into, into quadrants or sections. So we just need to finalize that with, uh, Troy and stuff.
Right, and Pat.
Eventually and Pat, yeah, yeah, I think our suggestion is pretty spot on though.
I think it'd be reasonable, we'll, we'll follow up with you, Pat, and Troy as well, see what you guys think of it, so. Um, yeah, essentially, there, I guess it was requested by the commission if we could get split up a little bit and, uh, versus having, blanketing the whole county, obviously it's very different within Meade County. Uh, there's currently only, according to that conference call, only two counties that have done that, Pennington being one, they took their Black Hills region and Clark County. I'm not familiar with Clark County, I know where it is, but, uh, nonetheless, they, they thought there was different weather events on the north end versus the south end, I think they went Highway 212 was basically their boundary.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
So, anyway, just thought the commission, I'm, all a little bit, because we got a ten o'clock hearing, I don't see anything we can skip to on the agenda, but, uh, anyway, I just thought, uh, just update you guys a little bit, yeah, we'll follow up with Troy and Sheriff West too. Any other questions for, for Mr. Henderson? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Sheriff West, do you have anything, I don't see on the agenda. Being here, thanks for your help as well on the elections, you were, I think you guys hit, you had a deputy hit every polling place? Yeah, that was great, thank you. Mr. Cleberad, do you have anything to State Attorney's Office? Uh, Troy, do you have, you have a couple things that, uh, what's that? Yeah, I think so, uh, we, go ahead and do your report now and we just had to see if there's a couple bits. Yep, go ahead and do highway. Skipping down to E1, as you follow.
Morning Commissioners, Troy Eastman here, Highway Superintendent. Okay, the, uh, first agenda item is the Dakota Township gravel purchase request that was made, um, at our Marcus Pitt. We have approximately seventy thousand tons sitting there stockpiled and they had, um, contacted us about purchasing some of our gravel. And, uh, I mean, we, we could spare it, but at same time, you know, we need all the gravel we can get everywhere, if you haven't seen the roads lately.
So you're comfortable, when you say we can spare it, that we're really looking for your opinion on if you're comfortable-
Yeah, I mean, it could be done, it's not gonna, you know, make or break us, I guess, but yeah, it's just a matter of the extra work to go through, whatever the process is to surplus or to, you know, find out the value of it, and, you know, I'm not sure about all that, I guess I haven't been through that process before.
Yeah, so I, I mean, this is a challenge one, one, because, um, I think we were right around seven dollars a ton to crush this year, and then we had engineering costs on top of that. I don't, how would we do this, Ken? Because it's a government agency, we'd have to surplus it, correct? I think for government to government, you don't-
Government to government, you don't need to surplus. You just need a resolution to do it and add an agreed upon price, whatever terms is agreed upon by statute. And that's, uh, six five one is the statute number.
So we could set a price and then, um-
Make an offer back to them, you know, ten dollars a ton, if agreeable, cut us a check and you can take it out. Because they're offering to-
Well, yeah, it's-
Load and transport themselves.
There's the crush price, but there's also, that's what I was gonna say, there's also the purchase price, obviously, when we have to purchase, I think it's a little bit closer to that twelve dollars a ton.
Yeah, whatever number you, you want to put out.
Helping the townships out, and, well, so.
Yeah, I guess if, if it's not a huge challenge to get them gravel, I'm not opposed to it, I think we just gotta find the price and it's-
Yeah, I mean, I know there's royalties involved with the landowners and stuff like that, plus the cost to crush, so there are a few things that we need to look at, but we can figure it out.
And I guess the next question I would have is, this is strictly for the gravel, they're not, they don't intend on your crew to be laying it out or hauling it or anything?
No, they, I mean, that, they said that they would handle the loading and hauling, so it's literally go there and get it, another concern of mine would be the weighing of it to know exactly how much they're getting, is, is the biggest thing.
Well, I think you also need to allocate a certain amount of charge, that you're gonna have to have some men there when they're coming to get it.
Yeah, I mean, we have a local operator there, but yes, it would be, take time just to kind of, you know, make sure that they know which pile is which, because there's other people that obviously have gravel there. So there's gonna be some work involved with it too.
Okay, so it sounds like we need a resolution before we move forward.
So is this a private pit or pit worth crushing?
It, well, yeah, we have crushed there in the past, I think, it was, I'm not sure what year it was, maybe twenty nineteen. Western crushed a pile there of around a hundred thousand tons, I believe, and now we're down to like seventy, so we've had it established for a while, but-
It's our pit, we hire, we hire down the crushing.
Yep.
Um, and they were paying royalties.
Yes.
So it's not somebody else's, but what are you using for crushing price?
Um, we found out that Western is planning to crush there right now for six dollars a ton, starting in December, plus the royalty, which I'm not exactly sure.
Or they're crushing for somebody else?
Yeah, yep.
So it's not, we don't control the pit?
Um, not completely, it's not, not ours alone.
Okay, I have a question, if Western's gonna be there, they're gonna be crushing, why don't they just, why, why do we have to be in the middle?
I'm not sure that the Dakota Township was aware, I had another gentleman call about this, same pit here recently and asked about it, um, you know, if we would perhaps transfer some of ours already crushed, so that way they have it knowing that Western's going to be there. Um, you know, and I didn't know if this was related with this township or whatever the deal was, but there, there's two separate requests for the same thing, and like I said, they've contacted and I talked to Western myself about, you know, to verify this information, and that's what I've come up with, so.
You'd think they'd have their, they'd just want to have their own pile.
Well, I think, and part of it, I, I would guess, it's, it's our gravel, correct? So, so they're, they're probably wanting gravel now, and then we'll, we'll get when we crush, that's my guess. I mean, we probably won't be crushing till June.
Well, they said they're gonna be there, and I, I mean, I'm not sure how much that they want, but they're hoping to be done crushing in a couple months, so I'm not exactly sure how many tons that would be, but-
Again, I'm sure they're probably wanting to get it on the road before-
Exactly.
So it, it probably wanting, is my guess, so, is why it's, they're not waiting for Western.
It sounds like Troy's gonna have to gather some numbers and come back with-
Yes.
To the board in, in the next meeting with the number, a suggested number.
That's what, I agree, so.
Okay, yeah, I can do that.
And a resolution, I would say, and we can either go up or down on the resolution. So if you want to work with your liaisons and, and come up with the price and, and bring a resolution back, that'd be wonderful.
Yep, we can do that. Then the, uh, next agenda item is the bid letting authorization for the removal of a structure on Brim Road. This has been an ongoing, uh, big grant project that has taken place. We built a bypass around the structure that's sitting there, closed down, um, on a section line road that needs to be removed. This is to cover the costs of the removal, to hire a contractor, and the DOT would let it and supervise the project, basically, so. At no cost to the county to remove the structure, then we'd have to put the structure back at some point, and, uh, you know, on our own terms, our own contract, however we decide to do that, whether we do it with our own personnel.
So is the idea to remove it and put culverts in, or what?
Yeah, that's what, it's been, the preliminary engineering is all done, so we know the size of the culverts, this and that, which we already have in the bypass that's made, it just now put the, I mean, there is some dirt work and clearing to do, because it's grown up with weeds and trees and slough grass and everything else, but, but yeah, culverts would be my suggestion to put back, um, in a straight line, I mean, we had, uh, easement there, that was temporary, we could have made it permanent, but yet it's a jog around the structure, so, I don't know, put it back where it is and-
Bump out, we looked at a couple months ago.
Yep.
Because they wanted us to surrender.
Yes, exactly. It's not that big of a deal just to put the culverts back, it's more dirt work than it would be just, the engineering is done and we can, yeah, put culverts in if we would like or something else.
So we'll have the detour until you can do that?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the chairman to sign the bid letting authorization for, uh, structural removal, uh, forty-seven, three twenty, five eighty-five.
Uh, second.
Motion on the second, motion in a second on, on the floor to approve this bid letting, uh, any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Uh, brings us down to the traffic counts. Different roads.
Yeah, the yellow ones are currently being counted, and then you see all the ones listed there, the white ones were, are yet to go this year. But it's pretty self-explanatory, it's on the website if anybody wants to see this or needs a copy.
A variance went down quite a little, half, half the count, which, quite a little is, you know, down to, from sixty down to thirty.
Right, yeah, it's-
Yeah, uh, that went down, but New Onward Road went up significantly, didn't it? Fairly significantly.
Maybe the new governor can get it for us.
Maybe.
That'd be good.
Any other questions for Mr. Eastman? Thing, I guess we did, anything on your just regular report, Troy, that you want to highlight?
Um, I guess not really, I mean, uh, we're starting to patch some asphalt, you know, on that New Onward Road, I mean, we realize that it's rough and, uh, yeah, it needs, it needs fixing, I mean, we're just band-aiding, obviously, right now, but, um, yeah, we're working on asphalt stuff with a little bit of good weather that we have left for the year.
And also on graveling, I, um, one, I know that Elk Creek came up today and I believe that the crew's out graveling that one, I think, horseshoe, you guys put a tremendous amount of gravel into, um, one ninety-fourth came up and, um, that one's actually in relatively decent shape, I think a lot of the things that happen is we pull these roads up to a standard twenty-four, twenty-eight foot width, they become a narrower, narrower road, um, and they're not the thirty-two feet that people are using, uh, county standards twenty-four with shoulders.
Yep.
I, yeah, and I'll, want to hand it to your crew, you, I think the last rain event, they were, it happened on a Friday, Thursday, Friday, and you guys were out all weekend, so I, I appreciate that, it, it, it hasn't been far from ideal conditions as far as these roads getting really muddy, but, um, I drive a significant amount of these county roads and, and, yeah, they get, they get awful at times, and I, I promised, uh, when I came in for election training school that day, that I'm not gonna charge Sturgis for the gravel, that, that dump off of my pickup on the streets to Sturgis either, but, uh, nonetheless, you guys got right after it and got them back in shape, so, and that's, that's all the crew from, down, so, appreciate it.
And, and I only heard, I only got one call on the last rain the other day, and that was avalanche and bighorn. And then they acknowledged it.
Yeah, it just takes some sunshine and a day for us to get out there on the roads, and I mean, it's like night and day difference from one day to the next, the conditions, so bear with us out there, I mean, we'll get them fixed up and continue to haul gravel, or, I mean, it shows where we need it when this happens, obviously, when it turns black, it's probably not a lot of gravel there.
I mean, you've, you've hauled, uh, I'm gonna say you'll be at six thousand loads of gravel pretty soon for the year, so, tremendous effort from the team.
Gonna need new trucks.
Well, we can't find-
Hundred and thirty-eight thousand tons of gravel have been spread on the roads this year, so far.
Yeah, they've been doing really well and we've thrown everything we got at hauling gravel, because it's, it's needed, obviously, and more, so.
So with tric-, six trucks, we've hauled over almost five thousand loads of gravel on the county roads.
Yeah, six trucks, when they're all operational, it's not like that all the time, but yeah.
Any questions, comments for the highway?
Thank you, Troy.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, it brings us back to our agenda item C, our hearings, the ten o'clock hearings, uh, let's go to C1, variance request curvature of the road, ordinance ten six two- Lot one, east of Carter subdivision. And Ms. Vig, if you could go ahead and give us just an overview of this project, please, I'd appreciate it.
Tiny Vig, Planning Director. So this is a variance request, ordinance ten, which is, um, road improvements, six two two, to exceed the limit of a maximum curvature of a road. This is a plot that has come forth before the planning board, um, with a couple of variances, this is one that we're still working through. On October seventh, the planning board made a motion to deny the variance to the commission. I have uploaded the full packets, I'm not sure where you guys kind of want to start, um, there, Tim, Tim is here from Bros Engineering, he's the engineer for the applicant, he submitted additional information on ten twenty-nine of an engineer letter and how to calculate the curvature of a, of a road, um, in, with our ordinance as a degree, so there's some conflicting information within our ordinance, and so we're trying to clarify if a variance would be needed, is, is, a variance is being requested for that. And we have some opposition of the easement agreement, or for the variance also, and the neighbors here, I received letters, there was one that uploaded this morning that I received on Sunday, that's on ten eleven, so that did get uploaded this morning, early. So this has kind of been going back and forth, if you want to open the variance, ordinance ten packet, please. If you wanna open the variance, ordinance ten packet, please. The page, I believe it's three or four, are you, one more down. So this is a preliminary plot that has been submitted to the planning board. The road comes in off of Sturgis Road, it has been shifted, it says L thirty-one. I don't know if you can see, it's kinda in the southeast corner there. That's where the full road will be, the road will come into the new subdivision. Um, Mike Carlson with DOT, South Dakota DOT, has approved this approach also. Um, there's letters that support that approach. Um, so in redesigning of the subdivision, the landowner has shifted the entire entrance onto his property. Um, there is a, a road easement agreement recorded, it's the last document of packet, um, that there's a shared easement agreement through there that serves lot one and lot R. Um, it's a fifty, it's, um, shared equal maintenance agreement is all it states, it doesn't say if it's- for further subdivision or anything, it just says for lot one and two, lot one and R, um, for future owners respective lots, that they will share equal, equally the cost of maintenance of the common roads serving lot one and lot R. Um, that is the only easement agreement I can find of record, um, the plats just show it as easement agreements, as there's an easement on there, um, I don't have anything further than that. Curvature of the road, if you go back to the agenda. On, oh, back to the attachments, no, you're fine, um, to the engineer letter. Um, I'll have Tim explain his letter and where he's coming from, and there's a couple of examples also on there. So I'll let Tim go forward from here.
Okay, Mr. Gross, I typically handle these by allowing proponents and opponents, I give them ten minutes apiece on it, so hopefully I think you have a lot of information, but I, I will open this up for the public to speak now, which I, you're sitting there, so I'll give you the first opportunity, so, uh, if you'd go ahead, Mr. Gross, thank you.
Well, I guess when we started designing this, of course you looked at ordinance ten. When you open up ordinance ten on designing of roads, there's three different, or three different paragraphs in there addressing how to design a road or curve. One is used in Ashto, American Association of State Highway Traffic Officials, which is the bible, we in road design use. That's section six point two, then you go down to section six point two point two, it states the degree of curvature should not exceed twenty-one percent. It says percent, but I'm sure it's supposed to be degrees, I think, but, and you go down to the next, another paragraph in section six point two point one, six states the minimum radius of horizontal curve on centerline shall not be less than one hundred feet. There's three different things there telling you how to do a curve. Two of them do not agree. The degree of curvature of twenty-one degree, of, of twenty-one degrees, which would give you a radius of about two-hundred-and-seventy-four feet, or the radius of a hundred feet, which is in section six point two point two. And I just think there's need to be clarity, which one of these are we using? Personally, I think, you know, Ashto was great, that's a, what I think should be used, that's, I guess, up to you. And, you know, I went back and I looked at other plats, you know, that have been used in here. We go, yeah, I, I looked at Pennington County and, uh, Lawrence County. Pennington County uses Ashto, and they can have these, you know, up to twenty, twenty-five foot curves, you know, in the rural, you know, urban type setting or something. Lawrence County uses a hundred degree minimum radius of curvature. Then I've gone back to previous plats, which I used, uh, Pleasant Valley. Pleasant Valley and just the ones on there that are in orange, they would not meet the degree of curvature of twenty-one degrees. From just, you know, and this was approved last year. I, I just, I need some better direction or some clarification to what the county wants to use for a degree of curvature.
So you're, you're, just, just so I can be clear, you're arguing the variance should be granted because the ordinance is off, is that, is that first to say?
Either that, or give me a clarification of what we're gonna use for design.
Sure, which would it be included in the ordinance?
I, I don't think, at least I was not aware of the contradictory, uh, points between the two. Were you, Tanya, was anyone else aware of it?
I was not aware.
No, and I, I can see where that could be very-
Which would recreate a, or just change, but at the same time, we could grant it, okay. Um, you have more to testify, stop your time while we talk here, but, uh-
I think that's the gist of what I need to-
Okay, and we'll, and we'll bring you, if the commissioners have more questions, we'll bring you back, sir, thank you. Uh, we can have questions after, grab the public talk, please, uh, anybody else that would be a proponent to this variance? Any other proponents to this variance? Any opponents to the variance? Uh, yes, sir, if you'd come forward again, ten minutes apiece.
Thank you, commissioners, my name is Devon Dennis, I'm the adjacent landowner to the Goshke property. My concerns with this variance is, one, they're trying to use a road that I have a shared road agreement on, that I have to pay to maintain half of, and I've been doing all the plowing, I've been doing all the grading. Anytime there's a need for gravel, we'll split the cost of the gravel, otherwise I'm taking on all this. Mike Carlson with the DOT approved of approach change without contacting me as being a shared owner of this approach. I don't believe what they're trying to build is gonna be beneficial for anyone in the local area of Sturgis Road. The topography out there is extreme, you pop over a hill, I am down below. Back in twenty-twenty-one, my son has the lemonade stand, and we were on the approach for that big banner year, and there was a crash because people popped over the edge, and there was bikes everywhere, and they freaked out, and they crashed. Nobody got, nobody was injured beyond their life, but there was very serious injuries with that crash. And I don't wanna see this, one, the subdivision going in because of that, but two, my son gets dropped off and he has to walk up the steep driveway, and these people are gonna have to come up a, I would guess, a ten-degree hill to get up onto the flat road to get to Sturgis Road, and in dead winter, they're gonna be hitting the throttle pretty hard to get up that in a short amount of distance. It's not a very long road that they're trying to build. Now, the fact that they said they have moved their approach or their road, I haven't seen it. I wasn't told, in my mind, they're still using my driveway, and I would request that you guys do not approve this variance. Thank you.
Where exactly is this at?
This is at two-one-four-six-five Sturgis Road, so if you get off at Tilford exit forty and head south on Sturgis Road, and what I call south, about three-quarters of a mile.
Just north of the campground.
Just north of Tilford Gulch Camp.
Oh.
That's the property that we're just-
So the campground, you can see the pond that's kinda covered up by the wetland.
So Tom Carter previously owned that-
Correct.
-property at once.
Um, any other opponents to this variance? Any other opponents to this variance? Uh, one second, you've, you had your time, and if there's some questions or some clarification, um, is there anybody else that would like to speak to this variance? Anyone else would like to speak to this variance? I'm not seeing anybody, so I'm gonna close public testimony on this agenda item. Uh, is there any questions, comments from the commission?
So I, I have a couple, I'm gonna, Tanya, you said Carlson approved their approach permit. When we had this in front of, um, planning, it was unclear as to whether he approved the first, how the first design was or the subsequent design, because subsequent design would entail a, uh, enlarging of that approach. Did we ever clarify, is that clarified? Did we get something from Carlson saying that he would let them expand that approach?
But that's, they put a thirty-two foot approach in there, we got permit for.
And what's the approach now, what's the size of the approach now?
Go back on the road, with, with the approach is what the road is.
Yeah, I understand what an approach is.
Probably about twelve feet.
You're saying their approach is only twelve feet wide?
That's what the road coming in, that's what you use to measure the approach. I mean, the approach goes, you know, bears out thirty-five, but how the DOT is, their approach is what the width of the road is, perpendicular to Sturgis Road, is what the driveway would be.
So just so the commission understands, there, there's a lot of issues with this plat. Now, I think he raises some good issues and we need to clean up our ordinance, but the considerations and one of the, I think it's fair to say one of the reasons this was denied is there's, there's a lot of concerns about this plat. Um, I mean, look, when they originally brought this plat in, they were dedicating the neighbor's ground, essentially, for a public road. And we said you can't do that, so all they did was they moved over the public road to be right next to the neighbor's ground, so you're gonna have a, allegedly a driveway on the neighbor's ground on an approach with a public road, and yet somehow that's all gonna work? I don't see it. Um, there were a number of issues on how this lot, how the lots are being laid out, and those aren't technically in front of us, but those were being discussed and had already been presented to the planning, and so, you know, there is a lot going on here where in, I think frankly, in my opinion, planning voted down this variance or recommended because planning doesn't see that this plat works, period, the planning board. Um, it doesn't, um, you know, I'll just tell you a flat out, I'm never gonna vote for that plat the way he's got that road design coming off the, off the highway. It, it doesn't, I don't know how you can put somebody's driveway, because what's gonna happen, what, you're gonna put a fence down the middle of that? On one side, there's gonna be a driveway, and on the other side, it's the public road? Where, you're gonna have to rebuild, I mean, I don't see how you can even share an approach and make it work, without causing all kinds of issues. So I'm, you know, I think he makes very good points on our ordinances need to be cleaned up, very good points. That in isolation, if that was the, I would probably be, if that was the only issue with this plat, I probably would've been inclined to vote for the variance below, but there are so many concerns with this plat that I think basically the majority of the board's like, we're not gonna give you a variance 'cause we don't see, you've got so many other issues with this plat, this just doesn't make any sense. Now, you can ask for that, but we had, I think at the time we had the variance, we had the plat in front of us too, or had a, or previously had the plat in front of us, um, and we had multiple questions on it. Um, this jiggering of the road on the entry point, people have grave concerns with, I have grave concerns with, doesn't make any sense to me, I don't know how you can do it and not cause problems. Um, so, I, like, very good points on the ordinance, the plat has all kinds of issues, uh, and I think that's where planning was coming from, that they're not gonna recommend approval of a variance of a plat that they don't think they're ever gonna prove.
Any other questions, comments from the commission?
But I guess, I thought I understood, uh, our development better, but I didn't realize we could, what is there, nine acres there?
Yes, I believe so, I think that's all.
I didn't realize that we could have a development of one acre, I thought they had to have at least four acres or some, three and a half or four acres.
They, they, they're planning a community water system, so that gets you down to, you got just to be, what, over an acre or-
Oh.
And so they're all barely over an acre, that was another concern as to whether, I mean, 'cause this one's a perfect example of part of our issue on this, and I think maybe that's something we should look at our plats, is, so you have all kinds of floodplain issues through this and terrain issues-
Yeah.
-that we, that perhaps we should be saying it's maybe a buildable, existing buildable ground of an acre.
There's not a lot of buildable spots on something.
That's exactly it, and that's, so we're getting this thing where people are squeezing these in in tough places, where you're like, well, yeah, can you get a septic in there, or, you know, what's your building, building envelope? Um, and so, uh, and then this one, like I say, they, they exit on the road.
Do you have a question, Tanya, was the second exit or entrance on lot one C approved through DOT as well?
Yes.
Which boggles my mind.
So I guess I'm looking for a denial or approval of the variance, so we can move forward on the preliminary plat, so the planning board can make a decision, the, the plan, the preliminary plat was contingent if the variance was approved or denied. Then we can go back to the planning board and deny the plat or approve the plat.
And that's, that's what's up.
So that's where I need a variance to know how to move forward with the plating, 'cause the plat has not been approved yet. That's why I just had the variance on there, it's the only, it was ordinance ten, which is recommended to go through you folks for final approval. That's why I was here, I understand there's a lot of issues with the plat, there's a lot of stuff that needs to be worked out still, but I cannot get a decision to move forward with the preliminary plat in full until I get the variance either approved or denied.
Certainly, and that's up, that is what's-
I made a stall, yes.
That's what's up before us today is a variance of the curvature.
So the variance for the curvature, is that the first corner coming off of the tangent section from the highway in? Is that where the variance request would be, uh, it's be that ninety-degree corner, is that what we're looking at, or is that- Is it on C thirteen or C eight?
Calculate.
No, it's not that, it's the next two, it's the next two curves.
In the calculator.
Approach off of Sturgis Road.
Yeah, but to answer Tanya's question of the variance last, what curve we're asking for.
Well, just get things moving, you know, on the basis of what the planning board did, I'll make a motion that we, uh, deny the variance request.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second on the floor to deny the variance request. Is there any other discussion to that motion?
Just, my only question was still which curve it was. Is that the one up here, Tim?
So we're stationed four hundred is in the middle.
Okay.
Right there, and where two hundred would be, them two curves.
Those two curves, okay.
Question answered. Look at, any other questions, comments to the motion? Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, I'll call for an electronic vote, are we ready for?
Uh, it would've been-
That's, would be in reference to the motion. Yeah, the motion is just to deny the variance request. Yes, please.
And can, can we get on a future agenda as soon as possible, um, a clarification on that?
Uh, that would, we'd need a hearing for the ordinance.
Yes.
Um, yeah, that would-
But it's gotta come from Tanya.
Yeah, we'll need a proposal as to the edit.
Yep.
I'm assuming the Ashto would be the-
Uh, that's where I would clean.
That's what I'd like to have that anyhow, 'cause-
Certainly, and if you would like-
But any other design, anybody else doing designs, they've gotta have a-
It sounds like we'd appreciate your input.
I thank you for bringing that forward to us.
If you could help with some input, that'd be wonderful. Posted it, posted. Uh, it looks like the motion to deny the variance carries by unanimous vote, so. Everybody for your time, uh, brings us to item C two on our agenda, variance request on a width of a road, ordinance ten-three-two-one-one-one, lot one A. Relief subdivision. Ms. Big, if you wanna give us an overview, please?
Um, this is a variance to ordinance ten-three-two-one-one to weigh the requirements for the current road width of the accepted as-is through Bucksburg Mountain, um, if you go down to-
Yes, I'm sorry, keep scrolling down. This is the location where it's at, um. Kinda, it's west of Ralph's Way that just got dedicated. So it's splitting a lot into two, Lot 1 would be 1A and 1B, if you scroll down to the plat. The hat, so, the road sits within a three, a section line right of way. Um, the hatched-in area is the asphalt that's currently there, which ranges approximately fourteen foot wide. They are requesting to leave the road as-is. Our ordinance requires that if you split a parcel of land, the road adjacent to it, if it's too narrow, it needs to be brought up to our specifications, which is a twenty-eight foot wide road. Twenty-four foot surface with two foot shoulders on each side. This road does not meet that. Their request for the plat to move forward, either a variance is granted or denied, so we can move forward with the preliminary plat with a decision on that also. Old Post Road is the access, a private access, he's been out, onto Fort Midway. Buffalo Road does have its issues, it's, um, it is steep in areas, it is not dedicated out as a public right-of-way. It just falls with, uh, within a section line right-of-way. Baseline Surveying also added, um, there's a letter from Baseline Surveying with some of his points on there also. Shannon is here for questions on the road, if anyone has any additional?
Thank you, if that's your overview, uh, it's, I'll open up for public testimony on this. Anybody would like to, any oppo, or, excuse me, any proponents to this variance? Anybody wanna speak in favor of this variance?
Uh, Shannon Boston, it's Baseline Surveying. Um, I guess my main point that I'd like to bring up is, um, this plat was seen at, at the planning zoning level as a form of intent. And, through that discussion, the, just getting the, the board's opinion on everything, 'cause we knew, you know, we had some variances in front of us, so, at that time, they did ask us, because the, the road authority within this plat is, um, the Bloxburg Paving District. So, they did ask us to bring this to the board, which we did. The board had an official meeting. They voted on the variance, and basically the way the variance rode, and the road width, and they all, they did approve the fact that one more lot could be platted on that road without, in their eyes, without any major road improvements to it, so. Um, and I think, I mean, that's a point I wanna bring to this, 'cause I think that should carry a little bit of weight on the approval of this variance that we're asking for, just for the fact that it is their road, um, and we were asked by the P&amp;Z to basically get grant that permission, but we did, and it really didn't make a difference, I guess, for the decision on the variance last time. This is why it got denied, so.
Yeah, just a couple of things to add to that. So, this, uh, Buffalo Road dead ends to the north. Um, it is not opened all the way up to the Kickstart Gas Station at this point. Um, there is quite a bit of tracks and land down there that potentially could be opened up in the future. Um, so I don't know what that potentially will look like, if, if no more subdividing in Bloxburg is going allowed, I'm not quite sure how that would work. There is, um, Old Post Road, like Shannon mentioned, that does connect with, um, Fort Midway. So that is, uh, another access now that we didn't have before. Um, I actually tried to go down this road a couple of years back, and, uh, because there wasn't a second access out of Bloxburg was the reason that it wasn't, um, you know, done at that point. So, that second access was, you know, uh, done, it's all ready to go, it's being used as we speak. And so that's why we, we brought this up. Um, I will also say that our neighbors to the south, so I'm the owner of Lot 1B there, Jeremy Anderson, are, um, what was the owners of the lots to the south subdivided their lot, um, for their daughter to build a house, and it comes out right on that curve of Buff, Buffalo Road. And that was approved here a couple of years back. Um, so, I'm just trying to figure out, um, what, if I did go in and make that road twenty-eight feet in front of my whole lot, um, which I easily could do, um, if that's going to solve the problem or not. In my mind, it, it doesn't make a difference if that road is twenty-eight feet for the section of property that's, that I own in, uh, right next to Buffalo Road there, but that was our thoughts when we were doing it. And we also thought, we can take the driveway, instead of going on to Buffalo Road, we'd be happy to take the driveway onto the Old Post Road as well, if that makes a difference.
I believe I have voted against these narrow roads ever since they've come up the last fifteen years. This is all part of Greslins original plans.
Uh, the Timberleaf subdivision was started by the Greslins, yes, but, um, that is a a right-of-way right there, Buffalo Road is.
Guys have anything else then you'd like to add?
No, I don't think so.
If you have some time left.
I think there's some questions about how this lot would be, um, how it would impact on some of the Bloxburg fees and things like that, but.
Oh, yeah, that's right. That was one of the things. There's, there was some confusion on, um, people living in the Timberleaf subdivision, if they were actually paying taxes, um, to support the paving and support the plowing and, and all that of Bloxburg. And I do, um, ever since I've lived there in nineteen ninety-nine, I have paid, you know, on the mill levy for that. Um, and this lot would also do the same. So, it would go into the, to the kitty for Bloxburg.
Okay, is, if you guys are done testifying, is there any other proponents to this variance? Anybody else wanna speak in favor of this variance?
Um, just for these gentlemen, they weren't here. Ms. Noize spoke to us during public comment, 'cause she had a conflict with this, and talked about the traffic and some of the change in elevation. Um, the only request for a variance here is the width of the road. Um, at this point. Can't remember, I thought there was a discussion as to whether it's. Not as different spots on it.
That, so, just to avoid any confusion, the driveway that is actually going into just a utility shed there now, that driveway's been there for fifteen years, that would be where the driveway would go to this lot, that is before the steep part of the hill. So it's, it's not steep at all, right where that driveway is. Now, right after that, twenty feet after that, it drops down pretty steep. Um, but that driveway is up on the flatter part.
You know, we got a letter, no one's living in there, are they?
No. It's a garden shed.
Okay, is there any other proponents to this variance? Anyone else wanna speak in favor of this variance? Is there any opponents?
Ms. Noize testified.
And yeah, Ms. Noize, well, for the record, uh, Ms. Noize testified, uh, as an opponent, she had an appointment, she spoke during public testimony, she was given three minutes, that's all, I've given everyone ten minutes during this time. Any other opponents to this variance? Any other opponents? Anybody else just wanna speak to this variance? Now I'm gonna close public testimony and, and offer commission, comments, questions. Any questions, comments from the commission? I guess, uh, what's the current width of the road, it probably says?
Uh, ranges, uh, fourteen foot. Average, oh. Shannon survey says fourteen point four.
Okay, that was my question, thank you.
Biggs? Any other questions, comments from the commission?
Um, so, Old Post Road is a private access, he's been.
I think they've, it's not, it's not on a section line, it's my recollection and.
It's one of the documents within the packet, Old Post, um, that he's been agreement is on, in that packet. I would have to read it again.
Yeah, it's not generally being used by the public right now.
So the, the, the variance, again, uh, Commissioner Wazorek brought this up, uh, what's before us is the variance on the width of the road, so, uh, we're not, we weren't asked any specific, just to keep it the same, is that my understanding? So the variance would be, instead of a twenty-eight foot road, it would be to keep it at the fourteen point four? That, that's, okay.
Just wanted to be clear. So that's, the only thing that's up before this commission today is nothing to the plats or anything, so.
You know, my memory is not the best. But I really, I didn't shine that lots in particular. It was always gonna be the last hill. And that's why they always went with the narrow road. And then another lot always comes up.
There was some discussion of that on planning, okay, what happens when somebody now owner of Buffalo Post wants to subdivide that property? Is it, are, are we gonna get a fifty lot subdivision, one lot at a time? You know, um, that was one of the concerns.
Back to, I can remember initially. Commissioner Creed, can you please? And initially, this road, they were gonna make it even narrower, if I recall right, they were gonna make it twelve foot and have pullouts. And, um, because nobody was ever gonna build again.
See, there's some pictures, it's actually the road area towards the end of the packet too, but, and I'm not sure which, which the, uh, Old Post Road, you know, that it's on in the record. But, document controls that. Um. Um. Part of the other issue I see on this. You look at the overview, is, when it makes that curve, it basically is right, it's still in the section line, it looks like, but it's right on the lot line as a road, so, you know, really the road needs to be centered at some point. And built bigger. I think the question driving that then is, can you add one more lot, and then this next guy who adds one more lot, does he have to pay for the two? Um, I think that's where some of the planning people were kinda like, everybody's gonna have to get together up there to figure out how to improve it a lot at a time. Over and over and over again.
That's always been my concern on these, is who's, who's ultimately responsible for building the road?
I, I agree. It's a really tough spot, because somebody's like, well, I'm only doing one lot, why should I, and then, and then, I, and I don't know of any, I don't know, Tanya, or that maybe we should look to this day. Where you can assess surrounding landowners for these kinds of things? I mean, we've done them a bit in TIPS where you kind of big, bigger group. I've seen them done that way, where somebody tips it, but you can't really tip this much of a project, it's not cost, cost feasible. But, I, I, I don't, I don't have a great answer for it. I, um, I'm personally uncomfortable with a fourteen foot low road, especially where it's located. Frankly, if this is just a variance for location, if it's acid, I would probably advocate that the planning center the road, even if they've kept it at fourteen. But I can't tell you what the plan is. Uh, um. And that, and it's a difficulty that all these landowners and Shannon runs into with these. Oh, but, you know, that lot is on three acres, change these down to three for lots, what happens to them? Our ordinance, they both can get water. Air butte. Get some of these where, I'm not saying that's their intent, but maybe they sell it and then somebody else says, well, I can split this now and make. Bit of where you draw the line.
When was the, uh, Mr. Veznes brought up, the, the form of the, form of intent, when was that discussed, what, the other date on the floor? Do you recall, Shannon?
That's September, Shannon.
Yeah, well, and I, and I, and I understand, I mean, that's, that's frustrating. I can understand your point to be frustrated with that, to, to basically have a promise given, I don't know if that should've been.
Yeah, nobody.
And I, I understand what the form of intent is, but I, but that's where we gotta be a little bit careful with some.
Well, and we're, we tend to be pretty careful.
Okay.
When we talk of form of intent, to say, here's concerns we would have. I mean, I think that that form of intent is, where exactly is this road, and where's it gonna end up?
It wasn't anything on the width probably, and it, that maybe just.
What's the difference between a form of intent and a letter of intent?
So, well, uh, a form of intent for purposes of planning is basically just if they come before and they have kind of a rough plan, try to get feedback from the board of things they'd be concerned about.
But it's not binding, correct?
It's not binding, and it's said multiple times, I'm, I think I'm very good about saying that multiple times, that it's not binding, because you might have one person raise an issue that another board member, you know, isn't committed to, or say that that board member thinks that would be sufficient for them, but not every, every board member says the same thing, because they want. Um, so, it's an attempt to try to, try to get this figured out, so, um, but, you know, the form of intents only provide you certain information, the facts, if they go forward, then there's information. Specific, you might say, well, man, I thought it was for this, now the neighbors are showing up, and now I understand there's other issues. Um, so those are, those are.
Yeah, that's where those issues, the form of intent doesn't always require a hearing and require them to reach out to the neighbors and stuff like that, so.
I'll give you an example. So this, that Infinity Project, they did a form of intent at this same October meeting. And they're told there's a ton of issues, and they come back with a plat that doesn't answer any of the issues. But they say, well, we went through the form of intent. Well, okay. I'm not saying that's what happened here, I mean, they tried to address it, 'cause I think, we, I think Shannon shot the distances after the form of intent. Um, and he gave a better, uh, the plat gives a better location of the road, exactly where it was, and the, the surfacing. So he provided more information, was information. Tired. But, some of that information cuts against them, such as, if you look at that, where that road is on the plat page, it's on Lot 24, it's like right on the section line, right-of-way, and you're like, oh.
Any other questions, comments from the commission?
One other comment I'd make is, we always generally on planning send them to any road district or plating district, because they gotta sign the plat. If it's in their, with this, if it's within their jurisdiction. There was a question about whether this road's in their jurisdiction, but, or whether, I mean, even though it's not in their jurisdiction, and I'm not even sure, is it in their jurisdiction? Okay, okay, 'cause I knew they were, they were doing some work on it, but I wasn't sure exactly if their boundaries included your property. Or just. Okay.
Because I think initially, when they started doing these one lot at a time, it was not.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
And that caused.
Might've been added or something.
Dialogue, yeah.
So, I. Yeah.
I will make a motion.
I'll second. Have a motion and a second on the floor to deny this variance request? Any discussion to that motion?
I'd like to say something, I, I, I think the landowner and Shannon have worked to try to make this work. I think they're, I think they're kinda stuck in this tough spot where planning board's at a spot where they're like, oh. At what point do we draw this line? And I think they're kinda getting on the. That is against them. Um, it's a, it's a difficult kind of judgment call. They've been responsive and provided. Kind of both the same way I did.
Yeah, it's tough when, when, uh, I mean, we've got, it, I think where we're at as a county in moving forward, I mean, it's, it's gonna be important more and more to stick to some of these ordinances that we thought in the planning, and it, it, go out there, I know some county roads aren't twenty-eight. So I mean, it gets, and I'm not making that for the argument, I'm just saying, we just need to make, going forward, we're just gonna have to make sure this is done correctly.
Yeah, and I think if we're gonna be looking at the road specs, whether we look at that twenty-eight feet, because my understanding behind those, and maybe what we gotta be is saying, you know, it depends on the traffic, it depends on subdivisions. And I don't know enough about the road standards, I defer to throw away a bit about those, as to when you really need that kind of width. Obviously, I think that if you're got a road kinda going through, where you got houses next to it, where there's no parking otherwise, maybe you need wider roads there. Parking one bit. A bit. Or, we don't, I, I don't, like, that, that technical road. Or we don't, I, I don't, like, that, that technical road issue is something.
And that's, I just feel fourteen's a little bit narrow here. Um, any other questions or discussion to this motion? We have a motion and a second on the floor, which is motion to deny. Well, not really, because you can't really speak to the motion because it's, that's all board decision. If you want to contact us each individually, that'd be, certainly be fine. I'd, I'd, I'd read your emails or, yeah, yeah. Um, uh, any other discussion to the motion? Being non, let's call for an electronic vote.
I recall you've done that for everyone. And I understand.
Uh, motion carries, uh, with four votes to, and on, uh, with Commissioner Seaman abstaining. Now let's move on to item C three, add to add omitted property parcel twenty-six seventy-four oh four, Vital Ridge Road. No, this is a.
Equalization.
Equalization. That's on your run out.
I bet you she's happy to be done with this.
Good morning. Ray Blakeman, Senior Appraiser with, uh, Equalization Department. Um. This was, um, a house was, the house value was erroneously entered onto the wrong parcel. Um, I am asking to add that home value to the parcel for the twenty twenty-four assessment for a total parcel value of two hundred and seventy-six thousand two seventeen. We will change the, um, asking to change the classification from non-owner occupied to owner occupied status because the home was not on there for them to apply for the owner occupied status, but they, um, they do live there. So, um, I would just recommend approval of the add omitted property.
Questions, comments from the commission exist? This is a hearing. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak to this? Anybody from the public wish to speak this? Think anyone from the public wish to speak this? I will close public testimony. Questions, comments from the commission?
I'll move to approval of the add omitted property. Second.
Second. And a motion and second on the floor to approve, to add the omitted property. Any discussion to that motion? Being non, I'll call for another electronic vote. Uh, motion carries five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, let's take about a ten, fifteen minute break. We'll be back in here, it's, uh, have, uh, back in here about eleven o'clock. Back to order, um. Uh, brings us up to the auditor. For D one.
So you'll find your expense budget report and your revenue budget report as of eleven eight twenty-four. There's, there, that and you will be over more because of the, uh, Steinley appraisal for the Hunt project, because of the litigation.
And, uh, uh, we, we put.
Hey now, hey now.
Then we put the wage study stuff under there too.
Yes, we did.
So that'll also contribute to us being over?
Yes.
You're saying we, that's, yeah, under the commission budget.
But I believe that the budget, the, uh, audit budget was about twenty thousand more.
Well, we, well, we will end up having to, but continue to, yeah. Ben's rest. Uh, go ahead, Riyad, unless there's any questions, more questions?
Is there any, any, any questions on the budget reports? If not, we'll move on to the, the overtime report. And I will tell you to brace yourself for the next overtime report ahead of time. Because that takes in the election week. It's actually, it affects several because we had equalization that was putting in overtime to help, et cetera. The Haba money? We applied for, the only Haba funds that are available to us is nine thousand dollars that I applied for after the primary.
The election did take a, it was, there was a line throughout this building for.
I'm looking forward to getting back to the gym, I will say that. About fifty, well, there was about, about fifty-four that came in person. About twenty-five percent of our active voters voted in person. Yes.
Still lines.
Uh, post-election audit is scheduled for November twenty-first at, starting at nine AM. We do have our board confirmed, thanks to Chris's good work. She's, she has a way with words and getting people to come work. It'll be a little over, but close to six hundred ballots. I've actually debated about putting two boards together. I think we need to do a sample, a trial to see how long a ballot is going to take with all the measures to see if we actually need to put two boards together.
We, uh, I know we did for the primary, uh, did we, we, we approved their wages, is that on?
We, I. We do that in January of each year.
I don't believe that you need to, we're going to run with the wages that were previously approved.
Thank you, because we did, we did specifically for the primary.
Yes, you did. Especially, uh, particularly for the post-election audit board in general.
That was, that was what we did, that in June. Any questions on, uh, for the auditor overtime budget? Uh, if not, let's go down to the hearing on, uh, D three hearing for on transfer of retail on off sale wine and cider, ECM, Parks and Recreation, Inc., Calicus. Aaron, one of our newest members of the auditor team.
And Aaron has been rocking the. And Aaron has been rocking the alcohol.
Geez, that's some, wow.
I should finish that, right, add one more word.
Maybe no more at work, please. You do on your own time is fine, but. Go ahead.
Uh, Aaron, will you turn your mic on, please? What up to you?
So this is a transfer of a retail on-off sale wine and cider and an on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine, and this is just for the remainder of 2024. And all the fees and taxes are current.
Okay, I do have to ask if there's anybody from the public like to speak to this transfer? Anybody from the public want to speak to this transfer? Seeing anybody that wants to speak, so I'll close public testimony on this. Questions, comments from the commission?
Yep, and then the, we'll do the 2025 liquor license renewals.
I wonder how many of our campgrounds are now owned by?
Ray was just there, Ray, can you answer that question? Ray just did a reappraisal, Ray and John did a reappraisal on all the campgrounds.
Uh. I would say off the top of my head, probably a third, but I would have to, um, do some research on that, which I would be glad to do for you.
Any questions, comments on this transfer and or action? Motion, a second, is on the floor to transfer this, uh, on-off sale wine and cider license, uh, any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O, same sign, motion carries. Uh, brings us to item D4, which is a new retail on-off sale wine and cider license to Kimberly Popkus.
The new application for the wine and cider, and the license fee has been paid and their taxes are current.
Uh, it says, anybody from the public want to speak to this? Anybody from the public want to speak? Not seeing anyone from the public wants to speak, so I'll close public testimony on this agenda item, questions, comments, and or action from the commission?
Uh, on the application, on the physical address, it does say that they're doing business in the municipality, but there's not any municipality there, is that correct?
Are you talking in Blackhawk?
Yeah.
It is not in, within city or municipality boundary?
Because the, the application says that it is inside a municipality. It's checked as, but I don't think it is.
Oh, I was thinking it's the city of Blackhawk.
Right, oh, they were confused.
Yeah, I think since they live in Spurfish, they just assumed it's operated.
I, I don't think that makes any difference, but. It is noted though.
I see what you're saying right there. Ken, would we have permission to correct that on the application?
Yes, it's suspiciously inaccurate. Everybody thinks Blackhawk's the town. Or too many people do.
Any other questions, comments from the commission, interaction?
I'll make a motion to approve the new retail on-off sale wine and cider license for Kimberly Popkus, uh, smokes and things.
Second. I have a motion and a second on the floor to approve, uh, retail on-off sale license, uh, smokes and things, uh, any discussion to that motion? Discussion to the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O, same sign, motion carries. Bring this down to D5, liquor license renewals.
These are the liquor license renewals for the upcoming year 2025. Um, I did attach a spreadsheet of the progress on the applications that sent out. Um, there are a few updates to the spreadsheet I sent, um, the Dollar General store, their taxes have been paid, and the farmhouse barn, um, have been paid as well.
So there's how many, which ones on, are they highlighted on this list, as far as which ones have not been paid?
Um. The green.
Correct?
Hmm. So, yes.
Green and the blue have not been paid.
The blue has not made any application, is that correct?
Yeah, we haven't received anything from the ones in blue.
Except for farmhouse, did you just say that?
Yep. In the green, they hadn't paid their taxes, but the Dollar General store, since I submitted this, has.
Okay, um, is anyone from the public want to speak to this? Anybody from the public want to speak? Anybody from the public wants to speak to this agenda items, I'll close public testimony, any questions, comments from the commission?
Has, has Kickstands ever gotten their application in on time?
Not aware of past applications, I guess.
I don't believe so.
I don't either.
And I believe the farmhouse has been, um, late as well.
And the farmhouse was today, so they, they are in.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you're right. Uh, any other questions, comments to this agenda item?
Where is Reno's casino?
Blackhawk.
John, I guess I gotta go, but you see. I guess I just, maybe we need to do an onsite visit to all these places.
Any other questions, comments? And or action?
Is it down there next to the Shooting Star?
No, I don't know where that one's at.
But it says Blackhawk, I just.
Any other questions, comments, and or action? You're looking for a motion to approve, essentially, all of those that have paid, is what we're trying to get paid up, so, um, motion probably would be appropriate, I think, Ken, is if we would, uh, uh, make a motion to approve, uh, these liquor license renewals, uh, except for the ones that haven't paid, we'd probably want to list those, is that correct?
Yes, I think, a motion to approve, the list is presented, other than those highlighted in green or blue.
Except for farmhouse.
I think green, I was in green. They haven't paid their taxes, is that true?
That's correct. Which actually, I, I, if I understand Ken correctly, them paying their taxes is not a Mead County concern, that's a state concern, so you could approve the green as well?
Yes.
I don't want to until they pay, I mean, that's our option, correct?
That is our options, it's up to us.
And, and that's, that's how we've always done it.
Up to us who we renew as.
Correct. The, the Secretary of State will not issue if the taxes have not been paid.
So.
But, but you don't have to approve either.
To clarify, Dollar General now has paid, so, uh, Shooting Star would be the only one on that list of those that has not paid their taxes, um, there would be.
Well, it looks like, you know.
Four on the blue, highlighted blue, because, uh, farmhouse is, is since paid, so.
Now, they've, they've paid their fees and their taxes?
Yes.
They came in this morning.
They were in this morning. Uh, to the taxes, no, no, so.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the list. Dixie Feed and Holding LLC, Kickstand, both of Reno casinos.
I'll second.
Motion, and, uh, just, just to ask, uh, Commissioner Wazorek, uh, would you rather make a separate motion, or would you rather do it in one motion to continue this hearing, so? Quiet, so I can know what that answer is. Okay.
Well, let's do a motion for the approval and then.
Okay, you're sep, so it will be a separate motion, just one.
That's what I'm telling you now.
Yes, I got it, got it, got it.
Not saying I'm going to do it, but.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve all of these except for the ones, uh, Commissioner Wazorek had listed, which is Dixie Feed and Holding, Kickstands, re, both of Reno's casinos, and Shooting Star.
Who seconded that?
Seconded by Rich Leggett.
You.
I, I just have a comment in general, and that is, can the assessor's office relook at what the assessment value is on Dollar General store, because $623.12 seems to be, that's not a correct dollar amount? Okay, then we need to, because that's, how in the world is a business getting by at that?
Any other questions to the motion on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O, same sign, motion carries, so I would be looking, if, if the commission so chooses to continue this hearing and gives these other places a chance to renew this liquor license, uh, we'd need a motion to continue this hearing.
I'll make a motion to continue this hearing.
11-26, 10:00 AM.
Now, Kickstand said last time they were never going to let it happen again.
I'll second for discussion.
It just amazes me.
I have a motion and a second on the floor to, uh, continue this hearing for, uh, mission meeting 11-26 at 10:00 AM. Any, uh, discussion to the motion, Mr. Creed?
When are these due to you guys, I mean?
We are supposed to have them into the state about the, about December 1st, so they can process before year end. There isn't like a hard fast deadline, other than the state would like them around the 1st of December.
So, I mean, ideally, this meeting, next meeting, uh, can be acceptable as well, uh, anytime after that is not acceptable.
Well, December 31st is when they expire.
We continued, last year, if I recall, we continued it to our last meeting, we kept continuing till our last, I'm not saying we have to, I'm just saying.
Well, yeah, and, and I can remember, we told Pat to go out there and make sure they weren't selling on New Year's.
Well, their license is good till midnight.
They got it in, what?
Yeah. Their license is good till midnight.
Yeah. It's nuts.
Anyway, so we have a motion, a second, on the floor to continue this hearing to our next meeting. Any other discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O, same sign, motion carries.
I mean, that liquor license is so valuable.
Thank you, Aaron, then.
I, I'd almost like to just.
I know.
Resign and put an application in.
Wow, that's.
Have it at your house or something. Got to have it in the county something.
Thanks, Aaron.
I never thought of that. Let's move on to equalization. Uh, we got some abatements up for equalization, F1, this is the agenda.
Lot of fires, huh?
Good morning, um, we are requesting abatement of four months of property taxes on 7304 Carroll Drive in Wonderland Homes, they had a fire on September 10th that destroyed the house.
Anyone here to speak to this abatement? Anybody, uh, questions, comments from the commission?
I move to approve the abatement on parcel, um, 15, uh, 740609.
Motion and a second to approve this abatement request, uh, any discussion to the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O, same sign, motion carries. F2, abatement on parcel 262404.
Good morning again, um, this is an abatement to remove a home value that was erroneously put on this parcel, and, um, the abatement is to remove the structure value from the 2024 assessment. That would recommend approval of the abatement.
Anybody here to speak to this abatement? Not hearing anything, question, comments, and or action from the commission?
Make a motion to rem, um, for the approval of the abatement on parcel 26740421.
Motion, a second on the floor to approve this abatement, uh, any discussion to the motion?
How do you find?
This one, we were actually, um, this is in conjunction with the ad omitted, the house was put on 21, it should have, or put on 21, should have been put on 24 in the same subdivision, and Jill was reviewing, um, building permits out in that area this year, and this was work that I had done previously, so that's why I'm presenting.
Any discussion to this motion, which is to approve this abatement? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O, same sign, motion carries, brings us to F3.
Uh, this is an abatement for a fire, um, on a property, um, parcel 335721, and, uh, this is to, uh, abatement is to remove 222,131 from the home value and 16,149 from the pole bound, pole barn value for seven months value in the 2024 assessment. Um, I know they've been in for building permits, we'll be revisiting the property for the 2025 assessment.
Anybody here to speak to this? None, questions, comments, and or action from the commission?
Make a motion for approval of the abatement on parcel 335721.
Motion, a second on the floor to approve this abatement, any discussion to that motion?
They have water, water problems that that fire?
Any discussion to this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. O, same sign, motion carries. Uh, brings us to F4, approval of agreement for Stanley Appraisals, 2025 assessment.
So after the appraiser that we had, Mike Amel, um, had east appraising property in South Dakota a few years back due to retirement, we had acquired Craig Steinle from Steinle Real Estate to appraise the Hunt properties. This would be, I believe, the third year that Craig would have, uh, will have valued this, the Hunt property. We were asking him to, we're asking you to approve this contract for approval of the 2025 assessment, which would be as of November 1st of 2024.
Uh, essentially, we've, uh, the, the dollar figure is the same, the total dollar figure, there's a few things that has changed.
His hourly, yep, I highlighted his hourly rate, his senior appraiser's hourly rate, and the appraiser's hourly rate that have increased. However, he's expecting the overall cost to not, to be, to be in the same ballpark.
That we've already approved and put in the budget.
Which is 13.5.
Because I would assume he already has the data.
Correct.
So this is just, uh, need an approval to, to.
Yes.
Nothing, dollar figures have not changed. Questions, comments from the commission?
I move to approve the agreement with Stanley Appraisals for the 2025 valuation of the Hunt properties.
Second. Motion, a second, on the floor to, to approve this agreement, uh, any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O, same sign, motion carries, brings us to G1, communicated commission. Uh, just an update from Sturgis Area Arts, in action? Want to make comments? Not, we'll just move down to the consent calendar, um, a couple things on the consent calendar.
That's a statutory requirement.
That's that, uh, uh, probably predator stuff that we send out. It's in our budget. We just ha, it's assessed that, that, uh, we have to send stat, state, you probably know the statute, Ken, I read it when we were doing the budget, but I can't recite it word for word, um, we have to send so many dollars to, in June and January, I believe.
June and December, I believe.
June and December, uh, to the state, it's about four, 4,500 to $5,000, it seems like it's been every year. Based on the number of sheep and the number of cows in your county, we're, we're actually statutory required to assess a tax on that, but, uh, we.
We never have.
Mead County ever has. county ever has. Uh, anything else on consent? Mr. Jeffries, I would offer you a brief minute or so, I, that's, I'm sure that's what you're here for. Okay, you're good. Anything else on consent? Not, I'd call for some action.
Make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
I've been expecting to see an application from you.
We have one. It's in hand.
Renewal.
Renewal, yes.
But he's waiting patiently.
Timely filed.
We can stall this out and make his anxiety go up just a little bit, but, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the consent calendar. Any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
O, same sign, motion carries. And, uh, it's like we do have a need for an executive session. Motion to go into exec, from somebody?
Personnel.
And contracts. Motion to go into executive session for legal contractual and personnel. And second, uh, any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. O, same sign, we are in executive session. Seconded by Ted DePade.
Oh.
We are now out of motion come out of executive session.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion to second come out of executive session. Any discussion to that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. There being no further business, I will declare us adjourned. Thank you guys. Are you guys... Sorry, we got...
Got to talk.[1716.84][1716.84](laughing)
Yeah, and I was hopeful at 12:30.
(inaudible)
No me, Chad, he can't.
(inaudible)